Just let you know we're recording and we'll start in seventeen seconds. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. The time right now is seven P. M. Mr. Heebner, will you will you be calling the role this evening? Thank you. One moment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum this evening are council members Davis, Foulcher, Kenny, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we heard at an earlier meeting that council member Gamble would not be here this evening, so unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Councilmember Foulcher, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Thank you, council member. All right. The first thing that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. This is the time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except in a quasi judicial judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If there's somebody that would like to speak that's in the audience, do we have a list from out front? All right. Thank you very much. And we'll take the people who are here in person and to to start. Was councilmember Hanford here during roll call? Did I miss that? All right. Please let the record show that councilmember Hanford is here entering chambers at seven oh one P. M. Good evening, councilmember. All right. So we're going to go ahead and start off with the people who are on the list who are here in person. And we'll start off with Eric Peterson. Mr. Peterson, will you please come on up and state your name and area of residence? And we have a timer that we're going to put up? Okay. Eric, you can go ahead and start with your name and area of residence. And as soon as you're done, we'll cut the three minutes.
Okay. So go ahead. Ms. Eric Pedersen, I live down on one hundred and seventy-ninth Avenue Southeast between Main Street and we'll say Blueberry Lane on that lovely strip. I was the one that sent you guys an email. And so to the point, I'm not getting into the details. We've got a safety issue on the road. I've worked with Officer Patton and then also Scott Peterson, email, phone calls. It's both been long road, but we haven't got a lot of progress on it. It's been six months that I've been in contact. We've put a couple trailers out there, speed monitoring, stuff like that. The part that I'm concerned about is I pulled up the guidelines for traffic calming versus like Wash Dot, Seattle, couple other facilities, Bothell. Ours don't align with what the standards are out there. And so I guess I have a question for you guys. It doesn't have to be answered now, but what happened? Like, why does it not align? And the measures that are in that stuff, phase one, phase two, they they don't align, and it's not going to give us the result that we need to help squash that traffic issue. So that's my two cents.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The next person that we have who signed up to speak is Julie Lund. So Julie, if you can come forward. Okay, you're next on the list. So I'll go ahead and check off Julie Lund. And we have Paul and Julie McDermott. Julie?
Hi. Hi. My name is Julie McDermott. I live on the intersection of one seventy-ninth and one sixtieth is our side street. I have three children in the Monroe School District, a high schooler, two middle schoolers. And we've lived in our residence for over twenty years. I'm really concerned about the increased speed over time down one seventy-ninth. It's always been a major thoroughfare connecting Main Street and Highway Two, but it seems like the speed has increased in a general sense. So I'm not just talking about, you know, the young aggressive drivers who like to hear their cars make noise, but I think in general, twenty-five feels unreasonable to most of the drivers that are driving down one seventy-ninth. You know, I get flashed, I get people running up on my tail. And it's just really dangerous. I know that a few years ago, maybe ten now, when the sidewalks was put in on my side of the street to improve safety for the walking kids, the kids that are walking down one seventy-ninth from Park Place Middle who live on the right side and Blueberry Lane, they're not crossing and using the sidewalk, they're still walking on their side of the street so that they don't have to cross the bigger street. And I'm just really concerned about the increased rate of speed that we see every day. And that's not even really getting into the topic of the excessive speeders who are hitting probably seventy or eighty before they have to stop on one fifty-fourth. So I know there's been some research done with the little box that was on the utility pole on the corner. So I don't know what the results of that were, but it seems to be so normalized that that's a major thoroughfare instead of like the four lanes on Frylands Boulevard. Ours is just two lanes, and we've got a ton of kids walking. I'm even afraid for like my kids who are a little older now, they can ride their bikes. And so they, you know, go down our neighborhood, and then they go up one neighborhood and find their friends up in that neighborhood. And I'm just really concerned if somebody wobbles on their bike or tips over that some someone's not going to see them. I know that this has been a problem on our one sixtieth cross street. Paul and I have repaired our fence three times as cars have gone through our fence. And those have been, I would say, unintentional genuine accidents. But if there was one of these excessive speeders that went through our fence, it wouldn't stop on our tree, it wouldn't stop in our yard, it would end up stopping in my living room. So it's pretty terrifying. When I had smaller kids like Eric's age kids, we we told them they weren't allowed to be on the grass close to the fence. So I mean, that's even excessive when they can't even stay in our yard safely because I think a car is going to jump the sidewalk. So anyway, it is a concern for us every day.
And Julie, I need you to wrap up. It's thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Paul, your name is listed here too. Did you want to come up and have some comments as well? All right. Thank you. Then I have Tammy. Is it money? McEnroy. Sorry, I don't have my reading glasses.
So my name is Tammy McEnroy. Felt just like yours. And I also live on one seventy-ninth. And my concern is the traffic speeding on our road. I walk my son down the roads. And like Julie was saying, there is no like sidewalk on our side of the road. So I'm trying my best to walk, and then I go to the next street over. So I don't have to be on the main road. But there's been multiple times where me and my son were on the main road where cars have zoomed past us without even thinking of of doing the common courtesy of going like around. And I got to say that while driving, not with him, not walking with him, but while driving on one seventy-nine as a driver in a vehicle, having cars come at me that have swerved into the lane a little bit because they were looking this way or that way. And that mixed with the excessive speeding that's going on is just really worrying me. And I wonder what it's going to look like when my son is older, when he can walk, when he can run. What if he is out in our front yard and then decides to walk somebody who's go who's speeding isn't can be able to stop in time if they they see him. So that's what I wanted to say is it's been an issue, and it affects me personally. So.
Thank you, Tammy. Next person we have who is signed up to speak is Tracy.
My name's Tracy Kreiser, and I live on one seventy-ninth, right just south of one sixtieth. And my concern is the northbound traffic, once they turn that corner, they're not just going up to twenty-five, they're wrapping it up, and they're passing my driveway, looking to be forty, fifty miles an hour sometime within four or five hundred feet of that intersection. They're not just people that are doing twenty-five and creep up to thirty. There are people that are just jumping on it to get going as fast as they can past all of our homes. And some of them are going so fast that when I look at the driveway, I can just see a blur. I can't really tell what kind of car it is. Couple little cars and some motorcycles especially. But that's that's my big concern is they're way exceeding the the speed that they should be going for having turned that corner. They're just they're gunning it at that point. And that's where I'm at on this. It's it's blatant, just as fast as they can get going in that one block. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to people now who are online with their hands up. And so we'll go ahead and bring forward Ed Engel is the name. All right, Ed, you're in the panel now. You can go ahead and take yourself off mute and turn on your video if you like.
My name is Ed Engel, and I am with Sohomish County Transportation Coalition, Snow Track for short. Snow Track is a mobility management coalition that advocates for connecting people and communities in Sohomish County and beyond with safe, equitable, and accessible transportation. We prioritize considering the mobility needs of communities of color, people with disabilities, elderly people, people of low income, youth, tribes, people of refugee status, and those that speak English as a second language. A unifying issue among each is the low access to mobility options and being disproportionately impacted by traffic violence. That's why we are strong supporters of Vision Zero and the Safe System Approach. By designing and engineering our streets to be calmer, slower, and more predictable, we can make our roadways inherently safe for all people, including our most vulnerable users. We applaud Monroe's efforts to address traffic safety by entering into a partnership with the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission. The project is focused primarily on education enforcement and approach the traffic safety that Snow Track hopes cities such as yours will move away from as you focus more on designing your streets to be safe. While traffic enforcement is still necessary, it's important that that enforcement strategies are used minimally and effectively, given that they can have negative impacts on people of color, such as racially motivated pretextual traffic stops, leading to escalated interactions with police. Thank you again for your focus on traffic safety and this opportunity to provide good comment.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Same thing here in the audience. If there's anybody else here that would like to speak, please raise your hand. All right. I don't see any hands. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be the consent agenda. Councilmembers, we do have a need to pull consent agenda item number five point five. And so the requested action would be for council to consider making a motion to approve the consent agenda items five point one through five point four. And so I have councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agendas provided in the packet.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet from councilmember Kenny, a second from councilmember Starborough. I'm going to respectfully request that the motion be amended to to remove item five point five. The reason for that is that five point five is what's shown in the agenda. So could there be a motion to amend the motion to remove consent agenda item number five point five? Go ahead, councilmember Kenny.
To approve the consent agendas provided in the packet.
Okay, to be clear, the motion would be, and you could say so moved, I move to remove, I move to amend the motion to remove consent agenda item number five point five.
I move to amend the consent agenda to remove item five point five.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, do you still second? Okay, thank you. All right. So there's a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove item five point five. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. We're now going to move on to the parent or the original motion. That motion would be now as amended to approve the consent agenda items five point one, five point two, five point three, and five point four with five point five, having been removed by the amendment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to item six on the agenda now. This is new business item six point one, confirm appointment for Parks Board position number four. I'm going to ask that Brandy Welliver move forward to the podium. Council members, I am appointing Brady Welliver to the Parks Advisory Board. I'm respectfully requesting your confirmation of the appointment. I had a interview with him along with staff. I feel that he is qualified to serve in the position. And I'm going to ask him to very briefly introduce himself and explain why you're interested in serving on the board.
My name is Brady Welliver, lifelong resident of the city Monroe, born, raised here. And now that I live in the city limits, I would like to give back to my community that I love so much. And I figured I would volunteer for this position and just try to help out where I could.
Thank you. Go ahead and have a seat if you like. Councilmembers, are there any questions for me, or is there a motion? Go ahead, councilmember Foulcher.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Brady Welliver to the Park Board position for a vacant seat with a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
I have a motion from councilmember Foulcher, a second from councilmember Davis for the requested action is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Congratulations, board member. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This is new business item number six point two. And that item would be ordinance number zero two five, two thousand and twenty-two, amending Monroe Municipal Code, Chapter ten point one eight. Thank you. Motorized foot scooters for first reading with Mr. Roberts. Jacob?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mary Thomas. Mr. Heebner, if you could advance to the slides with me, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. And we can scoot right through that first one because we're talking about motorized foot scooters. So we were here with the council probably about three weeks ago. Now we got bumped because of the fullness of the last agenda. Revisiting some of this very quickly, I'll gloss over it. Feel free to stop and ask questions if you bump into anything that seems inconsistent with your memories, council. Proposed code update is directed at repealing the prohibition of use of scooters by individual residents and visitors on city property and in the right of way, and directed at updating MMC ten point one eight. Next slide, please. It is not intended to establish a motorized scooter sharing or rental program where the city's involved, a public-private partnership or something like that, or to act as the first step or a pilot program in that nature. If that were to come forward later, that would be through the private side of a business and be a separate matter. Next slide, please, Rich. Impacts to residents and scooter users if the council was to amend the code reduces the financial barrier of ownership and operation as compared to an automobile for a piece of transportation, reduction in vehicle miles traveled, impact on roads, potential increase in parking spaces, reduced fuel consumption, and better access to transit services for those who use a motorized scooter. Next slide, please. Impacts to service delivery, potential individual users may not follow road or safety rules, increase calls for service by police and paramedics or fire might be potential, increase in insurance claim made to the city. And as we talked about before, this would be based on the number of users, not necessarily the type of use, right? So it wasn't that people are using motorized scooters. It's that there's a potential that now that it's legal, more people would be using motorized scooter. So it's volume, not type. Potential increase calls for service to Public Works and Parks for derelict or failed abandoned units. And then depending on number of users in the future, we might need to design and construct or install additional street scape features to accommodate scooter parking. Any questions so far?
Any questions, council?
All right, we'll get right into it. It was a pretty lively discussion last time, as I'm sure the council remembers. I think everyone had something to say about this subject matter. So I tried to to take down all of the recommendations and or questions that council put out there. If I missed some, feel free to correct me particularly. I suppose if it was your recommendation or question, I apologize. But leading into it, does the code allow for operation of a motorized scooter on the Lake Tye Trail? Short answer is yes. Thank you, Parks Director Farrell, for correcting me last time. Speed limit would be set at ten miles an hour, which is consistent with park code. One of the the recommendations was to not allow scooters to operate on sidewalks. The proposed code summary does not allow that unless you are crossing or on a scooter and crossing adjacent to to enter, enter or leave a property. And then when you're doing that, the maximum speed would be set at five miles an hour. Next slide, please. Do not place a minimum age restriction on the operation of motorized scooters. So the minimum age limitation of sixteen years old has been removed from this proposed code. With that, the city attorney's advice was to set a specific age range for certain activities on the scooter because it's inconsistent with RCW, which is well within the latitude of what the council can do. However, leaving it as a blank or a no number was not within the attorney suggested we not do that. So with that in mind, the minimum age on a city street would be ten years, if not accompanied by a parent or guardian. The proposed minimum age requirement also would have would be eliminated, sorry, on a bicycle path or trail. So Lake Tye. Any questions on that from the council? Okay. Next slide, please. Does this code pertain to electric bicycles and or one-wheel type devices as well as motorized scooters? It does not. Electric bicycles has its own RCW. Electric personal mobility devices, that's a new acronym to me, which would be one wheels, are covered on the under their own RCW. So if in the future the city council would like to develop specific codes related to those, that would be something we could certainly explore at a different point in time. However, that said, those are allowed to be ridden within the city of Monroe under current RCWs in both cases. So they're acceptable uses. It's just we don't have our own specific set of legislative kind of, I'm going to say bookends around that as it currently stands.
Jacob, would you mind a moment? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Said motorized scooters are allowed. And are they? They are not allowed on sidewalks, is that correct?
Not unless they are crossing the sidewalk from a property adjacent to.
They would be treated, they should treat the rules just like the bicyclists that go through town. They stay in the street, abide by the laws and the lane and travel, correct?
That is correct. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Think I covered that slide. Next slide, please, Rich. Is the violation penalty section consistent with the current law enforcement practices? And this was actually a staff question comment that came up between Commander Ryan and I as we were talking about this after the meeting. Section ten point one eight has now been updated from what you saw previously. Violations of this code section will be treated as traffic infractions. And then of the alternative mitigation option of impounding motorized scooters has been removed removed at the question of law enforcement. If the council has any questions about that, I would ask mayor if we could turn it over to Commander Ryan.
Any questions from council? All right, I think we're good.
Okay. So next steps, recommended motion, discussion and or, and there's the motion up on the screen. I would turn it back to you, mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jacob. Are there any questions for for Jacob? And if not, is there a motion to accept his first reading? Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Number zero two five slash two thousand and twenty-two, amending Chapter ten point eighteen point MMC motorized foot scooters, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
We have a motion from councilmember Davis, a second from councilmember Foulcher to move to accept his first reading this ordinance. Discussion on the motion, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So just for clarification, Jacob, so if a scooter wants to go down, won't say one seventy-ninth, where there's a bike lane alongside the road, if they're in the bike lane, they need to be under ten miles an hour. If they want to go more than ten miles an hour, they need to be in the regular car lane. Is that correct?
Not exactly. So if they're in a park, they need to be under ten miles an hour. If they're on a city street, it's twenty miles an hour.
Got it.
It's close.
So the bike lane of the city street matches the city street speed limit?
Correct. Yes. And then the park speed limit is different than the city street speed limit. And the the city street speed limit aligns with state law.
Got it.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jacob. We're going to go ahead and move on now to councilmember reports. And we will go ahead and start off with councilmember Scarborough this evening. Councilmember Scarborough, any report?
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, councilmember Fisher.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hanford.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Kenny.
I've started along with councilmember Foulcher, the Citizens Academy. It's been really great. So I'm enjoying that. That'll go until what, mid-November, I think? And went to the auction for the hospital on Friday night, and that was great fun. Other than that, all right, staying busy. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Foulcher.
Well, I hate it when Tammy does this, but we pretty much have the same report. But I will say that I'm a foundation member for the board member for the the hospital. So the at the gala, I am happy to report that our goal was two hundred thousand and our we met at two hundred thousand and thirty-four dollars. So it's like we just eked right over. So that's going to go towards our surgical staff, just some improvements there at the hospital. So we're very proud of our hospital and glad we could help in that way. And now that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, councilmember Foulcher and I were going back and forth with buttons. I was turning it off. She was turning it on and red, green, no. All right, let's let's go to staff and department reports. Do we have any staff and department reports this evening? The answer is yes, when I flip my page. And that would be our finance director, Becky Hassard. Becky, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the August finance report is in your packet. One thing that I wanted to point out is the real estate excise taxes have been very robust. And given what our plans are for some upcoming capital in the next biennium, that is very good news. The other thing that was not in the report that I also wanted to mention is, as you know, at the last meeting, we had that exit interview with the state auditors. We have now also completed our mandatory federal requirement that was due by the end of this month. So everything is now wrapped up for the two thousand and twenty-one audit. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm available if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Becky. Councilmember Hanford, you've got a question or a comment?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Just as a thank you, when the auditor was here and they did the report later in the evening, we thanked you and your team. You were gone because, you know, you'd already put in your eight hours, but
That's all she does, yes.
Yeah, that's it. So thank you very much. We, I want to, since you're here, I want to thank you publicly and your team. So it was great to have a glowing people.
I will share that with the team. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you. Any now councilmember Hanford and I are going back and forth on the buttons. There you go. Any other questions or comments for for Becky? All right. Thank you very much, Becky. We now have a report from our police department, and that would be Commander Ryan, who tonight I'm assuming is Jeff Jolly. There you go.
I am. I'm filling in for Chief Jolly tonight, who's out on some well-deserved R and R. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for our August police report, I just wanted to point out a few things. August is a great month for us when it comes to community events. Many of you attended a national night out against crime this past year. And then we also had the return of the parade, which I think leading the way for many of the vehicles that you may have been in was our honor guard unit. It was a shared unit with the Department of Corrections this year. Also, the return of the parade marked the return of the Evergreen State Fair and our our work with the traffic operations there at both Cascade View Drive and one seventy-ninth. By all accounts, fair traffic this year was busy as usual with no significant safety issues or problems. So that that went off really well. In terms of just some operational items, I did want to point out a significant serious injury motorcycle crash that we had on August twenty-third. This was on Woods Creek Road. We had a motorcyclist that was traveling in excess of fifty miles per hour, likely closer to sixty, going north on Woods Creek Road and T-boned with SUV. T-boned with SUV in your pocket. You'll see there was a, a red SUV that was turning in the roadway. The motorcyclist did suffer serious injuries to his leg, which was amputated. And we're continuing our investigation on that one. So if you have any further questions about the report, I can certainly answer those. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Commander Ryan? All right. Thank you very much. We now have a report from our community development director, and that would be Lance Bailey. So Lance, I think you're Mike. Yep.
Thank you. Oh, Mike. Should I be green?
Red, red means go.
Red means go.
I know.
I have police report.
I know.
I'm trying, I'm trying to be overly safe.
Yeah, don't use that driving home.
Yes. I, I thank you. Just a couple of highlights from the community development report. We have, we're seeing a little bit of a slowdown in submitted building permits. But we have seen an increase in some of the projects to create new lots and subdivisions. And we currently have 121 new lots in process. So maybe it's some of the, some of the subdivisions up north of town have been kind of finishing up on building. And so we'll see how that progresses through the rest of the year. And we did, we had closed our comprehensive plan docketing process, which closes in July. We did not have anyone, any citizen initiated cop plan amendments. But the, the city can still initiate amendments if we, if we decide to do so. We do have a new code, code enforcement officer, full-time now. And staffing-wise, we're still recruiting for a permit tech. And upcoming things that will be starting in planning commission and headed to city council is, did, did a presentation earlier tonight with the P3 committee about the multifamily tax exemption. That's going to go back to, to planning commission for their work. We've had, and will also be bringing to council the, the unified development code amendments that we talked about at the, at the study session last time. So any questions? That completes my report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Lance for community development? All right. Unless counsel has objection, I'm going to ask, I'm going to invite Jake Roberts to go ahead and give us an update on 179th, since we have members of the community here tonight that have brought this issue to your awareness. So Jacob, go ahead.
There you go. Thank you, Eric. Good evening again, council. Just a quick update on what's going, what, I guess what's transpired today. Monroe Police Staff and city staff have gotten together and discussed kind of the back and forth and, and the communications that Officer Patton and Sergeant Carswell have had with the group that's actually here tonight representing itself, I suppose, speaking on, on this matter. And then also, the design and construction team has had some back and forth. And one thing that became apparent to me after we were talking today was, the group has been talking individually to the different departments, but the departments aren't necessarily communicating the best together to get that information to put together. So we have essentially moved through step one of the council's policy with the education and enforcement portion by bringing the radar trailers out there and having specialized patrols onsite there. And that, that's kind of the police side of things. From the public works operating side of things, implementing the policy, we still have some data collection to do would be our next step. We have additional data collection to do to comply with policy. And then the city engineer will assess that data and determine what the appropriate kind of phase two treatments were. So it's been a while since we talked about that policy, but basically there were a few selected options that could be done. And so that'll be the, the next couple of steps that we take data collection, and then that'll be followed by some sort of a treatment. On a related, but not specifically related to the situation note, our operations side has selected the type of calming devices that they want to purchase with the council's approved budget this year, and is in the process of going through and complying with our purchasing policies to procure those. Of course, the supply chain is what it is, but that's that. So there, I, I think that covered everything that was in the email that we talked about.
Yeah, sounds correct. Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions at this time? All right. Thank you. If you just keep us updated on, on where things are with it, I think every, I think council members, and I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Great. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be item 9.1. This would be the city administrators' report. And I'm going to turn to our city administrator, Ms. Knight. Go ahead.
Great. And we're going to go through a few of the items that are on the upcoming extended agenda. So looking forward then to October 4th, we have a council public safety committee meeting. And for those of you that are members of that committee, you know that that first meeting in the month is frequently canceled. And so you have a long list of items that are going to be brought to you that have been pending and waiting for updates. And those include the municipal court quarterly report, an update on drones, a review year-to-date of police statistics, body worn camera update, crime victim advocacy, and then finally, the police facility needs. So those will be items that'll be coming to the public safety committee, that first meeting in October. For the regular study session for October 4th, we're looking at a presentation by the Sky Valley Food Bank. They have a new director, Matthew, who will be giving council an update on what's going on at the food bank. And then recognitions of boards and commissions has actually been moved to a future meeting. And then the discussion of American Rescue Plan Act Change of Scope Process by Mr. Heebner, Community Human Service Advisory Board Member Count, and I'll be presenting that. So that's it for the October 4th meeting. Looking forward then to October 11th, we will have a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting that night. We'll be talking about your legislative priorities for the upcoming session for 2023, a brief comprehensive plan update by Lance Bailey, and then continued updates with our city clerk, Jody Wykoff, on the council rules of procedure. So a busy meeting that night, but I'm sure we'll make some forward progress on council rules of procedure. The regular business meeting, then, we have a number of consent items, including ordinance number 252022 for motorized scooters that was presented for first reading this evening, a public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget, and then definitions coming back from the, excuse me, Unified Development Regulations. Under new business, we have a lodging tax advisory committee appointments with Mr. Heebner, and then regular department reports.
All right. Any questions on the extended agenda from the council? All right. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. So I had mentioned last week that 10-4 meeting, I would most likely be gone. And so I, I will be gone and out of town the next week as well, the, the 11th. And that's the, our legislative affairs meeting week. So I'm open if the other, if the other members are, are available, I'm open to switching that to the 19th or 18th, the following week, unless that conflicts with staff or the other members. And we don't have to decide right the second, but just a heads up.
Is there any objection from the other committee members to moving this to another date? We can, we can figure out if, what that other date would be, but lean toward that Tuesday if possible. Any, any objection to that? Councilmember Hanford, you still have before anything further?
Great. So at this point, looks like we'll do it on the 18th. Is that correct?
That's what it, yeah, we'll just make certain that it's not conflicting with something else, since we're doing this right on the fly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hanford and Councilmember Kenny. Go ahead.
I just had a question about the food bank, if they are planning to reschedule the ribbon cutting.
I understood they had rescheduled that, but I haven't heard of a new date.
Okay. Thank you. I haven't either. Just checking, since he's coming to present.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, apologize. I am going to be working the night of October 4th for the public safety committee meeting. It just becomes a challenge if we get a call and I have to leave. I just want to make sure that we have a quorum once I do leave, if I have to leave during that meeting. And then I'll also be remotely attending for the city council meeting on that day as well.
All right. Thank you to our clerk, Mr. Heebner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm for Councilmember Fisher for the notes. Was that October 4th, you said, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anything further from council members? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go on then to item 9.2. This is a city administrator report. Deborah?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. A big thank you to Ben Worthing and the senior leadership team for holding down the fort in my absence last week. I know it was a busy week, a number of things going on, but appreciate everybody stepping up and, and helping out. Just also wanted to let the city council know that we had issued requests for proposal for two separate items, one for communications firms and the other for government relations firms. And so we're going to be interviewing those selected firms in early October and then coming back to council with recommendations for contracts later on in the month. So just a look forward. And then just a reminder of upcoming meeting cancellations, that the November 8th, 22nd, December 20th, and 27th are all canceled, which means we have eight meetings planned before the end of the year. It's hard to believe when we come back from the summer break, that there's just very few meetings left to conduct the city's business. So our future agendas will be full and looking forward to kind of wrapping up the year with the city council.
All right. Any questions for Deborah from Ms. Knight? All right. Mayor's report, Monroe this week is there in your packets for your interest. And last week, I participated in the mayor's exchange in Richland. About 47 mayors were there and about three or so city administrators or city managers had some really good discussion and comparing notes across the different cities as to some of the things that the cities were involved in. There were a lot of concerns about recruitment of personnel. Right now, holding on to, so retaining and recruiting personnel is challenging. There was one city that I spoke with that lamented on how some of the larger cities are offering bonuses for positions, and in particular, out of law enforcement. The reason being is that the small city of 2,500 had just lost their only, you know, their, one of their only police officers, and we're talking, they have a couple to the city of Spokane, because they had offered a $7,500 to $10,000 bonus. So just letting you know that even though there are cities that are doing things like that, that one of the negatives to this is that it's making harder for the, you know, for other cities that just don't have those resources to be able to compete and retain or recruit personnel in this labor market. They, we also talked a bit about sustainability, diversity, equity, inclusion, and economic development, and, and things along those lines. So it was a, this one was really good. It was a lot better than the last one from eight years ago. And I was happy to see that this was more of an exchange rather than a, a one-way presentation. And so I appreciated that. Also, attended a meeting with the mayors yesterday here in Snohomish County. We had some conversation again around law enforcement, recruitment, retention, and some of the bills that the, that the legislature had adopted a couple of years ago. You're all aware of those items. The mayors have expressed an interest in forming a coalition to help with lobbying and advocacy down in Olympia, and are looking for funds from cities to, to help, to help out with funding a contract. So I'll be getting more information to bring forward to council to have a conversation around that. They're looking for somewhere between, I think it was roughly 3,500 and 7,500 for each of the cities, depending upon your ability to contribute into the, into the work. So with Deborah back, she and I will take a look at that and go over things with other staff and come forward to the council with a recommendation. The, the cities also, the mayors had also submitted a letter to the county executive and to the county council advocating for funding with the prosecuting attorney's office around issues that intersect with the bill, the bills that occurred coming out of the legislature after the Blake decision. So just letting you know that there's a lot of work in that area right now. Let me see, what else? I'll be reading Hortonia's Who on Thursday, so to a class of third graders. They, they'd like to, they'd like to hear about what a mayor does. And I, I forget how old third graders are right now. So I might just sing, I'm just a Bill S. I'm only a Bill sitting here on Capitol Hill. That, that might be more fun than hearing what a mayor does. I think I've covered just about everything. Oh, I did meet with the, the school district, just in case you hear about it. I met with the school district and also with the county's Office of Social Justice on Tuesday last week. There, as you're aware, there have been issues, not just in our community, but other communities in Snohomish County, that, that relate to racism and issues of gender and, and so on. And so my interest earlier this year, when some really bad graffiti, really violent, that depicted violence had appeared on a couple of buildings in town, was to try to do something in, in conjunction with the school district around this issue. And over the course of June, I learned that the Snohomish County, I'm sorry, that the Snohomish School District was working on something, and then learned that the Marysville School District Midsummer was also dealing with some issues around this. So I figure that rather than us trying to do our own thing here in Monroe, if there's a way for us to coordinate with two other cities and two others, school districts plus our own, that that may be a way for us to, to speak with one voice in this area and, and, and just have some common messaging and expectations around that. So as this conversation continues to develop, I'll go ahead and share with the council members. Also attended the chamber luncheon last week and had a good presentation there. And I think that's, I think that's about it for now. Yeah, that's enough. Yeah. Any questions for me? Okay, I'll have decaf next week before I come into the council meeting. All right. I think that that's all we have. We do have a need for an executive session. We anticipate that it'll be about five minutes. So for those of you that are attending, when we go into an executive session, we're dealing with legal issues and stuff like that, that we don't discuss in public, because then other people are going to know what we're discussing. And that can take away our ability to negotiate or deal with different things. So I'm going to say some fancy words here. The doors are going to close. And then if you want to come in afterwards, we'll reopen the doors. You can come back in. We're probably only going to adjourn, but there's always a potential that we take action after that. So now with all that, I'm going to say the fancy words. All right. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. It's pricing a property related to the purchase of property, person to RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1, subsection little b. We're going to go into an executive session for an initial seven minutes to begin at 7:47 PM. We're, and we will return back to this current session to take action, if nothing else, to adjourn for the evening. We are now in executive session. Thank you. We are now in executive session. Thank you. For the record, this is Rich Heebner, Acting City Clerk. The executive session has been extended two minutes. All right. We are back out of executive session. The time right now is 7:56. There's no further business this evening. Unless there's objection from the council, we will be adjourned and we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.